Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Maskey.
Here.
Schwantes.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Alvarado.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Seeing that I am attending remotely, I have asked councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem Fagerly to preside over the meeting, seeing that he is in the facility in person. So, Councilmember Fagerly, will you please preside over the meeting and take over from here? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number four, proposed additions or deletions to the agenda. Otherwise, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second. Further discussion?
Mayor Pro Tem, I didn't hear that. Were we adding the closed session?
Oh.
I didn't know we needed to do that. I would move to add the closed session to the end of the meeting.
Which would be for labor negotiations.
That would be, I would, an alternative number fifteen on the agenda.
All right, we can do that. Further discussion? Clerk Thompson, could we have more, roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, and approve the consent agenda items. You want to read them, Clerk Thompson?
On tonight's consent agenda for council's approval are the City Council minutes of October 19th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of October 26th, Planning Commission minutes of October 21st, application for exempt permit from the Wilmer Rifle and Pistol Club, the council's payable report for October 15th through October 28th for council's acceptance, the Human Rights Commission minutes of September 15th, the Wilmer Area CBB minutes of September 15th, Park and Recreation Board minutes of September 16th, and for council's information, the Wilmer Main Street minutes of September 22nd and the Wilmer Main Street minutes of October 27th.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. When I roll call?
Councilmember Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Item number eight, presentation of artists on Main Street. That'll be Sarah Swedberg. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. Can everybody see the presentation?
No.
No? Dave? Wonderful. Oh, here we go. There we go.
Yes.
Awesome. I'll take it. All right. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, tonight we just have a for information update on the Artist on Main Street project. We're going to start with just a really quick overview of the, of the project and the program itself. For those, I know you guys have all heard the spiel many times, but those that might be listening in or new councilmembers coming in next year that might be interested, this year has looked very different than it did last year, but we're excited that, that there are a few projects that have moved forward. We'll talk kind of about the status of, of what's to come. So just as a quick recap again, Artist on Main Street is made possible because of the partnership between Springboard for the Arts and Rethos, and it's funded by the Bush Foundation. We are one of 11 communities that have been selected over four years to participate in this program. It consists of community cohorts, project funds, and embedded artist-led problem solving for our downtowns. There's structure that each community goes through every year. This is a three-year program. We get funding the first two years, and that third year is really technical assistance, which will technically be our next year, though again, it'll look a little bit different. So we start with a challenge. What is your vision for your community? Where are their gaps? And then we call for creatives to help us solve those challenges. In Wilmer, the past two years, our challenge has been to create gathering spaces in our downtown that are frequent and everyday, that, that move into that everyday status beyond your Wilmer fests and your holidays parades. Then we train. We hold creative placemaking workshops, and we spark interest for the program. We move to soliciting proposals, navigating city and property owner permissions, all of that kind of stuff through the creatives. And then it's the creatives' time to shine. And they work on awareness and support and documentation. They implement their project. And then at the end, we recap. This year, it's a little bit more of an update than necessarily a recap. Again, like I said, our challenge was to create more visible, frequent, everyday gathering spaces that really just celebrate who we are as a community and those, those gathering spaces happening in downtown Wilmer. The images are all from last year because we didn't really have many images to share of in-person gatherings. I know it's a little bit strange to see groups of people together without masks on. This year, we, we happen to be the first community that held our trainings for this year's cohort. So we did actually hold a training back in March before, before quarantine and everything started to, to happen. We took a step back because of the pandemic. And then in May, we re-held some virtual trainings to just get a little bit more awareness and kind of restart the process, which we found to be really, really helpful. I won't read too much of this, but really, placemaking is the act of people coming together to change overlooked and undervalued public and shared spaces. This has become quite the buzzword in community engagement and artist-led work. See plenty of examples, whether it's something like decorating your house for Christmas to community celebrations or some minions made out of hay bales in a field. Core principles of this program as a whole, we, these are adopted from Springboard for the Arts and Rethos that set this program out to, out to start. So all of the communities kind of operate under these core principles as we're working through all of this work. Defining artists broadly, right? We don't have to be a professional artist to participate in this program or receive funding. We're working with local artists. That's really, really important for us. Working and celebrating those kind of who we are and what we're, what we're working from, the existing assets that, that we already have that we get to enhance. Collaborating across sectors, giving people a common cause, again, that challenge that we set out, providing simple mechanisms. We took a lot of great direction and great guidance from Healthy Together Wilmer and all of the, the barrier breaking down that they did in our community and how that worked and the work that they did for that. And we got to take it and, and run with it and really use those findings that they had. Small and many, we don't want big cumbersome projects. We want something that's easily doable in a couple months, from start, from conception to, to implementation. Building lasting relationships. And lastly, but most importantly, paying those artists and creatives. So, what we're actually here for, the implementation part. These are all images from last year. We saw things anywhere from drum circles to mask-making and gardening and community murals, all sorts of really fun projects. We had 13 artists last year. We had $15,000 that we got to give out directly to those artists. This year, we had 10 artists. And thanks to some additional funding from the Wilmer Area Community Foundation, we had about $12,500 to give out to artists. So this year's projects, two projects that have been completed. Child's Play was the first that we saw. That was done by Sherry Buzio and the Barn Theater. They had weekly kind of kids' fun sessions. The kids had a different theme each week that they got to learn about. They did a lot of work with downtown business owners and some of the artistry work or different, maybe it was going to Jake's Pizza and talking about making pizza, or one week it was actually bringing in some other Artist on Main Street artists to teach about photography and different things. Rainbow Trees, I'm sure many of you have seen at this point. This was yarn bombing on trees, and I really wasn't sure how this one would be received. But we've had so many ripple effects from this project. There was actually somebody on Facebook who had family in South Africa, and that family member decorated a tree in their backyard because of this project. So, I love telling that story because that's what this is all about. So John was a, was an artist from last year who came back with a new community partner, Nicole Arnold. They're both occupational therapists. So they really drove home this idea that finding purpose right now was really important for all of us in our mental health. A Mosaic Gathering is our third project that has completed this year. This is on the side of Becker Market on Becker Avenue across from Bethel Church. And Pauline and Demo Inc. put together just this beautiful permanent piece on the side of that building. So if you haven't seen that yet, it went up very quickly. The design all came together socially distanced at Demo, and then they put it up downtown. So that'll be a lasting piece that we're really, really excited to have downtown. The fourth project that will happen this year, and this is our final project happening, it should be going up shortly, is Wild Inside Translation. And this is a photography exhibit that John Kellen will be working on. He's going to have six photographs at three different restaurants downtown. So there'll be six at Frida's, some at Azteca, and some at Somali Star. Each, kind of the idea behind this project is to take nature outside that we see in Minnesota and bring it inside and share about it. So there'll be, the description by each product, by each picture will have multiple languages, like four or five different languages in those translations to really share and just kind of come together and gather as a community. We'll also have a virtual version of this exhibit as well that we're excited about. And that should be going up, if I didn't say it before, next week. Puppets with a Purpose. Nikki was another artist that came back with a new idea. She's used this opportunity as an artist herself to really grow and try new things that she wouldn't have otherwise been able to try. The image you see there is from last year. She did the mask-making workshop. And this year, she wants to do, or she will be doing, some work with puppets and teaching people how to make puppets and then doing some kind of theatrical work with them afterwards. Again, because of gathering, from here on out, all of the projects have not happened yet. They're kind of in, in progress. And thankfully, because of the grant money, we're able to extend into next year. So we'll see the rest of these happening at the beginning, spring and kind of summer of next year, starting with Nikki's. Somali Food on Main Street is going to be a series of Somali cooking classes that I am particularly excited about. Abdouelli owns Ameen Grocery Downtown. And him, as well as his wife Deku and Leila, are going to be putting together this series to really just share about their food and making it together. So we're working on whether that's going to be partially on Zoom, maybe to start, and then hopefully, even if it's just sharing some food outside, once we can be outside again, doing something in person next year is the goal. Pieces of Us, Dream Technical Academy students are going to be working on some pieces. The image here, again, they haven't started yet. They're working on it this, this semester with the kids. But this is an example of something that they'll kind of put together, another one of those mosaic pieces. This one won't be permanent on a building. It will be traveling. So we're excited for that opportunity. The Ripple Effect of Love, Libby Anderson, is a new community member that happened to learn about Artist on Main Street right around the time that we were asking for proposals. She lives in Spicer. So we're really excited to bring in some community members outside of Wilmer, but still within our county to really infuse some gathering spaces downtown. She's going to do a whole series about just working with your neighbor. So again, working on, hopefully in person, something next spring could transition into some sort of take-home kit activity as well, if, if need be. Riley Kennedy and Chris Riddell are going to be working on a Floating Lanterns project. We're going to really kind of utilize the light poles and do some fun kind of walking tour sort of exhibit outside. Again, waiting for weather. So we'll do something in the spring and summer of next year, which will be a fun addition when we can all be outside again. And then Family Fun Day. So Sharon and the First Presbyterian Church had a plan for a celebration this year. That has not happened yet. But we're going to, because of this funding, they're able to expand that day that they have planned and have some more, some, just some variety in, in culture and arts opportunities at their event this year that we're excited about, or, well, next summer now, that we're excited about as well. So, next up, the last project that will happen here in 2020 is this photography exhibit by John. Again, Frida's Cafe, Azteca, and Somali Star will be where it is held. We'll also have stuff on Facebook, working on a video and some, some various things to bring that virtually as well for people if they're not in person at those, at those restaurants. So, thank you. We're very excited. If there's any questions, let me know. And I can answer those quick.
All right. Thank you, Sarah, for the information on downtown Main Street. Is there any questions for Sarah? Look down here. Seeing none. This is for information only.
Information only.
All right. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item nine, Public Works Safety Report for October 21st. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. First of all, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Public Works and Public Safety came together by electronic means on Wednesday, October 21st. We're in around 5:00 p.m. Members present were myself, Councilmember Osmus, Councilmember Alvarado, and Councilmember Nelson. Present with us were also our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, our Deputy Fire Chief, Matt Grave, our Engineering Administrative Assistant, Ms. Del Bosque, and the West Central Tribune. We were called to order at 5:05, and we started with the discussion item. The discussion item regarded a tree at the fire station. Staff brought forth some information regarding a tree that is on the east side of the fire station and that they had been contacted by Schreagman's Cleaners and Laundry with a request that the tree be removed because it was becoming problematic, causing damage to the roofs and also of, of the cleaners' buildings as well as the, the fire station. And so we took the information regarding that. Instead of an action item, the committee felt it was probably better off to not set a precedence by, by choosing specific trees that may and may not be cut down. We noted that we do have a tree trimming policy, and that we have certain criterias that have been established by Public Works. So we opted to leave that a discussion item and to allow the proper department, departmental people to make those decisions. It would be noted, or it should be noted, rather, that there is a tree of significance that, that did come from Germany, actually, and it was donated to the city at the fire station location. But this is not that tree. So this is just a tree. Not that certain trees are more special than others, just, you know, this one's not from Germany. So, it's also noted that if and when changes are made, they will remove the tree, they will remove the stump, and they will look to make some aesthetically pleasing landscape ideas, but, you know, nothing out of the ordinary. And like we said, we felt that be better left to the purview of Public Works. So moving on from there, we moved on to our first action item of the evening, and that was regarding project number 2001-A of the Ninth Street Southeast Reconstruction. And this is change order number two. 2001-A includes the reconstruction of Ninth Street Southeast from Wilmer Ave. to Pleasant View Drive. Bids were opened back in April, and Dunick was awarded the project. Change on, no, change order number two came from the cost of concrete removal due to driveway and elevation grades. This change is in the amount of $5,780.50. This is within our contingency budget, so we are still within budget. And I would like to enter that as a resolution now.
I'll second that, Alvarado.
All right. We have a resolution for a change order number two on Project 2001-A, Ninth Street Southeast. Any questions? Anyone out there? All right. Roll call?
Councilmember Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Our next action item was regarding project number 2003-A, a First Street overlay, and this is change order number three. Project 2003-A included the overlay of First Street from 19th Ave, First Street South, from 19th Ave to West Bone Trunk Highway 23 ramps. Bids were open back in April. Dunick was awarded the project. Change order number three resulted from the following. Thirty-six linear feet of water main on the south side of 19th Avenue and east of First Street. And that water main needed to be replaced. Replaced, once they got down into the ground, it was deemed necessary to make those infrastructural replacements. This change order is in the amount of $29,465.40. We are still within our contingencies budget on this project, and we are under budget total. So I would like to enter the motion authorizing change order number three in the amount of $29,465.40 for Project 2003-A.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second for change order number three from Project 2003-A for $29,465.40. Is there any questions? Seeing anyone? Roll call?
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Our next action item is regarding project number 1905, the Swanson Field Path Overlay. We actually broke this up into two items. We have a change order number one on that project, and we also have the, the acceptance of the project, authorizing final payment. We discussed Project 1905. It was the path overlay at Swanson Field. It was originally constructed in 99 and cracked sealed in 2011. So that was nine years ago already. The low areas of the path had more cracking and portions were becoming uneven. Our first change order resulted from additional seating and mulching to meet up with existing grades so that it was flush with the area surrounding. And the project was approved and, as having that change order in the amount of $421.75. So I'll first enter a motion approving change order number one in the amount of $421.75 for Project 1905.
I'll second that, Alvarado.
All right. We have a motion and a second for a change order for Swanson Field Path Overlay for $421.75. Any questions? Roll call?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The second part of that motion, then, is to help close out this project and authorize, accept the project and authorize final payment to Dunick Inc. in the amount of $5,698.25. That makes our total, our total contract amount in the amount of $104,954.25. The original estimate, including the contingencies budget, was $1,149.86. So we're about $10,000 under budget on this one. And we will be authorizing final payment, again, in the amount of $5,698.25. Enter that motion now.
I'll second that, Alvarado.
All right. We have a motion and a second to accept the project and authorize final payment to Dunick's in the amount of $5,698.25. Is there any questions? See any? All right. Roll call?
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Maskey.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Our final action item of the evening was, was acceptance of project number 1903-A. That is 15th Street Southwest Overlay, That is Fifteenth Street Southwest Overlay, authorizing final payment to Dunick in the amount of $47,795.72. 1903-A included the overlay Fifteenth Street Southwest from Trot Avenue to Nineteenth Avenue. Change order number one in the amount of $5,710 was approved on the 21st of last month for adjusting driveway elevations from a previously vacated street and moving cash basins to match with new curb lines. Final quantities have been reviewed by staff. We're ready to make final payment and close this project out. Again, with all the change orders and everything else, we are under budget. So I would like to make a motion accepting Project 1903-A and authorizing final payment to Dunick Inc. in the amount of $47,795.72.
Osmus, second.
So we have a motion and a second to accept project and authorize final payment for Project 1903-A, Fifteenth Street Southwest Overlay. Is there any questions? Not? Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. That was the conclusion of business for the evening. I just want to know, we had short discussion, and give a well-deserved shout-out to our engineering department and our public works department this year. We noted that the past few meetings, we've been overseeing change orders, final payments and closeouts for construction projects, and we're now on like three weeks of solid projects coming in under budget. So we greatly appreciate the due diligence shown by our engineering team and everybody else working in that department. With no further business, we move to adjourn at 6:13. I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to...
Um...
Is there any questions? No one wanted to speak? All right. We have a motion to file the minutes. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, next on the agenda was a finance committee. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The finance committee, full council, met at 5:00 PM on Thursday, October 22nd via teleconference. Those in attendance were councilmembers Nelson, Fagerly, Osmus, and Plowman. Also in attendance were councilmember Mesky, Davis, Schwantes, Alvarado, City Administrator Gramm, Finance Director Okens, City Clerk Thompson, Park and Rec. Director Bumgarne, Westburg and Nations Auditor David Early, Baker Tilly Consultant Doug Green, and the EDC Director Aaron Bachman. After the meeting was called to order, we have three action items to bring for the council to vote on tonight, and the first one is the Dover Township fire contract. Dover Township is under an annual contract with the Wilmer Fire Department for services. A statewide formula is used to calculate the township's share in the cost-share proposal. The current numbers were reviewed with the committee as well as historic information from the previous five years. The proposed contract for 2021 is totaled $37,715.86 based on 165 firefighter hours accumulated in 2019. It was moved and seconded to recommend a resolution to authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the 2021 fire agreement with Dover Township for $35,715.86, and I will enter that motion now.
Plowman, second.
All right, we have a motion and second to authorize execution of Dover Township fire contract in the amount of $37,715.86. Any questions? Seeing none? Roll call.
Mayor Protem, Fagerly, that amount is $35,715.86.
Mine says 37.
I'm sorry, there's two figures in the minutes. In one place, it's 37, and in one place, it's 35, and...
We'll take the higher one.
The actual amount is $35,715.86. I calculated that out, so that is the correct number.
So there's a correction. It's 35,000.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Our next item was to receive the 2019 audit, and there will be a motion to receive this at the end. David Early, lead auditor from Westburg and Nations, presented the 2019 audit to the council. He noted that since 2015, the city, as planned, has been spending down fund balances in the general fund and capital improvements fund. As of 2019, the total fund balances of those two funds were $13,314,718. It was noted that, given the planned 2020 expenditures, the fund balance is still in good shape. Other items were the general fund balance classification, classifications of $261,217 of non-spendable and $12,112,532 of committed. Detail of the committed fund balance was reviewed, and it was recommended per established fund balance guidelines that council action be taken to establish each amount designated under the committed fund balance. The community investment fund balance as of 2019 was $10,589,151, which is up significantly with the previous year due to a couple of debt service funds that matured and were finalized with the remaining balances transferred into the community investment fund for future use. The debt service fund balances are approximately 43% of the total debt, which indicates no major issues. The waste treatment fund appears to be generating more revenue than expenditures with more than appropriate debt coverage available. At the end of 2019, there was approximately $1.7 million in cash and investments, which helped provide significant revenues against unexpected expense fluctuations. A summary of the city's investment portfolio at the end of 2019 was provided, and it was noted that concentration of maturity dates of six to 10 years have decreased over the last few years, with the greatest concentration of maturity dates now being invested for only one to two years. It was recommended that the city's investment policy be revised to address limits on the length of the investment maturities, particularly those with a term over five years. Currently, there is nothing in the investment policy that designates how much to be invested for certain intervals, and it was recommended that that be addressed to consider interest rate risks. The overall general fund did not exceed the budget. However, within that fund, six departments exceeded their individual budgets, with Public Works seeing the greatest coverage, overage of $200,733. Half of the Public Works excess was attributable to personnel costs. Finance Director Okens explained that overtime was a big factor in the overage as far as fuel usage and supply usage. The Planning and Development Services overage was due to a retirement. Mr. Early recommended that the council take some action when the budget is exceeded to at least note that other funds could be used to cover the deficit. The governance communication letter was also reviewed, noting that the items previously discussed were addressed in this letter. Staff will present a recommendation to update the fund balance policy, investment policy, and budgetary overages policy at the next finance committee meeting. Committee members asked Mr. Early for a recommendation on a procedure to address or prevent budget overages. He felt departments were already being provided monthly reports and should discuss issues and concerns with the finance director and city administrator about projections and come up with a plan on what should happen. It was moved and seconded to recommend a motion to accept the 2000 audit as presented, and I will enter that motion now.
Osmus, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the 2019 audit as presented. Any questions? Mr. Mayor?
I'll bring up the same concerns that I brought up last year, and that is that last, in previous to the last two years, you know, the last two audits, the mayor has been contacted by the auditing agency and asked the mayor's opinion. The charter is very clear on what the responsibilities of the mayor are, and this step is again not being followed. I brought this concern up last year. I was assured it would be corrected, and it wouldn't happen again, but now it has happened again for the second year, and I believe we're developing a trend here, and I think trends need to be dealt with. Also, the mayor was not asked to give his overview, which had been done each of the previous four years that I was mayor. I received correspondence with the auditing firm. That was not done again this year. Last year, we were told that that was being done by the mayor or the finance chair. And so, again, I will just make the council aware of that. It is the council's direction, but I firmly believe that the city charter should be followed on this issue. Also, when overages happen, it is in the charter that it states that the mayor is supposed to be notified of that, and I was not notified on any overages on the last year. So for the record, I just want to make that known.
All right, thank you. We, councilmember Nelson, we've had overcharges before in different departments. Do you know how that was handled then?
The only comment that I remember from before was that there was supposed to be a quarterly review of that when the overages happened. That was something that was discussed that night, and I believe that that is what we will be hearing at the next finance meeting as a way to do that. I think one of the concerns that came up at the finance meeting was most of these didn't happen until the end of the year, and so when is the right time to do that? And I think that's why the question was asked of the auditor with what should these procedures be? And each, I, you know, I believe what I heard is each department is really responsible for that, but the communication, I think, that needs to happen between the department heads and finance and administration, I think, is a question with how that's going to take place. And so, the other comment I was going to make is that with Mayor Calvin's response there, or questions with that, I think that's something that needs to be addressed between administration and our audit firm as to how they are doing that and when they are notifying people with that. I have no say in, in, in any of that information. I have met when I've been asked to meet, but I've not asked that question. And so, it would feel like we probably need to review the procedures with the auditor as to what needs to happen and, and in, you know, review with the charge, the charter. So there certainly was not anything intentional from, from my side of what I saw. We were just on deadlines to get things done, and I think for me, the most important was that the entire council had the opportunity to review the audit. That was a request, I think, that had come from last year, too, and it was, we needed to get that done. And so, I guess I defer back to our city administrator to follow up on making sure that those protocols are followed next year.
I agree, and the CPA firm should be contacting the mayor, administrator, and the finance director, and the chairman of the finance committee, I would think. So how many years in a row has this firm done our audit? Because we had a, I don't know if it was a policy, but we went so many years, and then we switched to an audit firm for a few years. So we just want to make sure everything's on the up and up, and I'm sure it is, but it's nice to have different eyes seeing these records at times, so. Fernando?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I agree with the concerns that the mayor has, and I think sometimes the best way to solve that is to send a letter. I don't know if it would be the chairman of the finance committee or from the city administrator to our auditing firm and let them know of our concerns, so they have it in writing and it's in front of them, and then they can plan accordingly. It just, it just gives them something concrete to hold on to, and it kind of clarifies, clarifies the problem. So I think that would be something we should think about doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
The engagement letter that we would need to do with them should be spelling these things out, and so, I mean, we can certainly notify them now of that concern, but I would think that, that that's something that should be reviewed by administration prior to going into next year's audit. And I don't remember how long it's been that we did bids, et cetera, those types of things. I mean, that's something that we need to be reviewing at the finance committee, too, with where we're at on how many years. On the reverse side, I would say Mr. Early is very good to work with. I do think he knows the city auditing procedures, and so I have nothing negative to say about the auditing firm or working with him, and so I think we need to just clarify what went wrong here, so.
All right, councilmember Mesky?
Well, I am looking at the city charter. As a former chair of the charter commission, I will tell you that it's available. It's on our website, and a firm could look at that, or anybody else could look at that to make sure we indeed are following it. If we are not, and we should identify what particular section we are not following in the future, I want to give out a little bit of props to the finance committee, however, for the recommended policy improvements that were cited in the management letter. Getting them responded to in such a quick fashion is great, because I can recall several of these being issues in the past that we didn't deal with, and that's why they're recurring. So I applaud that we are going to see those coming back through very quickly. So thank you for that.
Anything else? No? That's it? Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion to accept the audit. We have a roll call.
Councilmember Mesky.
Aye.
Schwantes.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Matt Carries. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Our next resolution was regarding setting a public hearing for the sale of bonds for local option sales tax projects. And I'll just speak classification. I see Doug, Mr. Green is on our phone call, and so I would ask Administrator Gramm if he wishes to have Mr. Green review the information that he shared with us. The one thing I did note in the minutes, there was a discussion regarding the cost of doing bonding, but there was also information shared with the council regarding the difference in interest rates with the bonding rates, and that is not in here. And so, Mr. Gramm, would you like Mr. Green to do this section here before we motion?
That would be perfectly fine. Mr. Green?
Thank you very much, City Administrator Gramm. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Nelson, and the rest of the council, it's good to see everyone. At the finance committee meeting, we discussed moving forward with the financing of the first two projects, the first two sales tax projects. And as you're aware, the city charter has a process. Every time the city incurs any kind of debt obligations, there is a, there's a process to follow, and that was the main purpose of the agenda item on October 22nd. And so, that's the resolution in front of you today, is just to get that process started. And then, secondly, as Councilmember Nelson mentioned, we have the option of, we have different methods of selling these bonds. We can, just like the street improvement projects that we've done, I believe, the last three years, we've done a private placement with Brimmer, and they've also, they've also participated those bonds out to other local banks. Or another option is to sell the bonds publicly. We obtained a credit rating. We put together an offering document, and so we discussed the different interest rates. And while interest rates do move together, mostly, for the most part, there are times when they do diverge, you know, a bank rate will diverge to a certain degree from what we can get in the public bond market, and that does change daily. And of course, after tomorrow, there could be some certain, there's going to be uncertainty, so hopefully by the time we end up selling these, things will have calmed down a little bit. But right now, if we are, if we were to sell bonds in the current market, we expect to get an interest rate about, about 1.2%, given the city's very solid credit rating. We approached Brimmer to see what kind of interest rate they should provide, and it was 1.73. So if you recall the difference in selling the bonds privately, you have lower financing costs because you don't incur the underwriter's fee, and you don't incur credit rating costs. And so, the difference in financing costs is roughly about $67,000. But conversely, that lower interest rate by selling bonds, we estimate that the annual debt service would be about $19,000 less. So after three and a half years, the city would make up that difference. Again, interest, interest rates can change by the time, you know, we get there, well, we say, you know, if they move, they're both probably, both going to move up or down, no matter what happens over the next month. So that was the discussion we had. There's, you know, the other policy decision is, you know, whether the city has wanted to keep these bonds in the community. Those were with street improvement bonds of a lesser amount, around $2 million, so any differences were certainly less than what we're seeing. would, would certainly less than what we're seeing here. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions in the council? Seeing none. So Councilmember Nelson, what is your request then?
Um, we had a motion, um, to, uh, recommend a resolution to set a public hearing for the sale of $5 million in bonds. And I apologize, is there a date on that information? I don't see it in the minutes here. Just a second. Can anybody help me out?
The next two weeks then? The next meeting?
Um, Administrator Grammets, is there a date that was recommended?
The next one.
This was not on the original agenda. Mr. Green?
Yeah, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Nelson, are you asking what the, uh, I'm looking at the memo and the submission, we, if the council approves this, denies this, we've submitted notice to the paper tomorrow and it would be published on November 7th. And then we would have the public hearing on November 16th.
Thank you. So yes, that's, uh, would be November 16th to set the date for the public hearing. Thank you.
Did we have a second on that? We did not have a second. Okay, we have a second now. So we got a motion and a second to set a public hearing for November 17 at 7:02. Questions? Sean?
Um, so there is no recommendation on whether we would secure it through local privates or through, um, public at this moment?
I think Doc, or Doug Green, you'll be, uh, soliciting from local banks and on the, um, market.
Uh, Mayor Protem, yes, I can certainly come back on that day and, and provide updated interest rates. Uh, and that might be a good, good idea, given, uh, the volatility that could take place over the next two weeks, you know, uh, in, in the markets. We can see a lot of fluctuations. But I can certainly come back on that date and, uh, Brimmer should provide an, an updated rate as well. And then, uh, there'll be a plenty of comparable sales in the market, uh, two weeks after the election. Um, we, we don't expect any or this week, people are sitting out of the market and, uh, it'll gradually pick up, back up, um, over the next two weeks. But we'll have some good comparables to provide to council, uh, at the November 16 public hearing.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Audrey?
Um, thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, I would hope that we would, um, receive some additional information, but also I guess the question I had after your statement about the amount was whether we should be looking to bond for $5 million right now in light of where our sales tax projects are and what we might hope to do next year with that. And so I am hoping that we will get some sort of staff recommendation on the correct amount. And would that make a difference on whether we were funding locally or going out to the market, um, with that? And so those were questions that I was left wondering about after the finance committee meeting with the way the proposal was brought forward. And so, um, it feels like there's a little bit more work to do there before we make a decision.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment?
I just thank, uh, finance committee for their work on this and also Mr. Green for bringing this, uh, information to us. I just wanted to remind the council that when the local option sales tax committee was meeting, um, and talking about putting their project together, I believe it was three and a half percent was the interest rate that we anticipated we would have to pay. And so this is considerably less than what, uh, than what we had put in the Formas. Uh, and again, most of that work was done with, um, the low, uh, investing Wilmer committees. Uh, we did not get a whole lot of help with it from the city. Um, but I think that, uh, at one of our meetings, our investment Wilmer meetings not too long ago, that number was confirmed again by our finance director that the number that we had looked at was about three and a half percent. So these numbers are very favorable. So excellent work by, uh, Springsteads and also the finance committee on this.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Administrator Grammets?
Yeah. In reference to the actual dollar figure amount, uh, I think it's pretty clear that the Swanson Field project has exceeded their $2 million and need to cut back. So we, we, I do anticipate them spending all of their $2 million allocation. And as well as Robins Island, we're at, uh, the one and a half million dollar mark and they are, uh, coming back, uh, in the very near future for a proposal to fulfill the two mil, or the $3 million, uh, budget that they originally had with the shelters and, and the other items that, uh, I think would be very nice, uh, for that particular park. So I don't have any issues with the $5 million, uh, dollar figure, uh, because it is the combination of those two. Uh, any monies, uh, available, uh, afterward can be utilized, you know, uh, for, for the sales tax projects in general. Uh, so I'm not too concerned about whether it's 4.9 million or 5 million. I think the 5 million is, is a good number to shoot for.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We have a motion for, uh, public hearing for November 17. Roll call?
Councilmember Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmiss?
Aye.
Plaman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Matt Carries. Thank you, Mr. Green, for being with us tonight. And we look forward to seeing you in two weeks. Bring us good news.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Nelson?
Uh, thank you. The rest of our agenda was, um, discussion items. The first one being the 2021 mayor's proposed budget. Um, we are working to have a full council meeting at the community center this, um, Thursday to focus on fund balances and revenues available. Um, after that, a similar meeting is scheduled for November 19th to discuss operating and capital expenditures for the proposed 2021 budget. An additional, uh, meeting will be scheduled for November 30th or December 3rd to discuss the debt service and wrap up any final recommendations. Um, we do have a go-to meeting option still available for any of these meetings. And I will request that staff check in with council members on Wednesday to see who will be, if anyone is uncomfortable attending in person, um, just to make sure that, um, resource wise, um, we're set up for what we need for that meeting on Thursday. Um, if council members have any questions regarding the budget, please submit them to the staff so that there is an opportunity to be prepared to answer those. Um, I think that pretty much covers that item. The next discussion item, um, we are going to be talking about later on the agenda, and that's the, uh, CARES Act money. Um, EDC Director Backman was at the committee meeting to request additional funding. Um, and I believe we'll be discussing that in detail when we do our action item. And so, um, Administrator Grammets explained where we weren't ready at that time with where we were at with expenditures. And so we'll move forward with that at the end of the meeting. The next item was community center rental fee. Um, there was a request regarding Vision 2040 Leadership Committee regarding rental fees. Um, we were informed that the rec department was reviewing the city's current fee structure as it relates to nonprofits and city associations, and that they will be bringing back their recommendations, um, to the finance committee. So this matter was taken for information and we will be reviewing it again later. Um, the next items, we are kind of talked about already, fund balance policy. Um, we will be reviewing that at the next, we did get a copy. We will be reviewing that at the next meeting. Um, we also were presented with the COVID-19 monthly funding report. That is in the packet for your information. Um, the September finance, um, monthly finance report was reviewed. Um, there was a comment here I wanted to, um, talk about. Um, legal fees as it relates to local option sales tax projects, um, were brought up by Administrator Grammets. There was a request to break out the cost so that we had an idea of what was in our legal fees as it relates to different projects. Um, so we took that for information. Third quarter investment reports were presented. Um, we received an update from the department. Um, Mr. Elkins had been out on vacation and I think we're catching up now again. Um, miscellaneous, um, there was a request for, for, uh, discussion regarding CARES Health lease requirements. Um, Mr. Grammets, I believe, had requested information from the city attorney, and I believe we've gotten an email from Mr. Grammets. I don't know if he has anything else he wishes to speak about this evening, um, with that. Um, but the hopes of making sure that council members are up to date on what our requirements are with CARES Health and what CARES Health requirements are, um, with the city. Mr. Grammets, do you have anything else you wish to speak to on that one? I know you've been communicating with Mr. Schramm and you've shared some of that with us.
Uh, city council members and mayor, I have had conversation, uh, with Mr. Schramm. I passed that information on, uh, to you all. So you knew what I knew. And, uh, at the present time, I, I'm, I haven't gotten back to, uh, Mr. Scott, uh, if he had found anything out on the, uh, documents between the city and CARES Health, but, uh, should be able to do that this week.
Okay. I know that Mr. Schramm has been in communication with you, and I think it would be a goal that we all get to the same page with, um, being able to support where we're at with, um, the CARES Health, um, project or CARES Health lease. Um, future agenda items remain the same. And that was the end of our meeting. We adjourned at 7:15 and I would make a motion to enter the minutes. I believe there should be two corrections in there. Um, the figure on the one location and also the sale of the bonds on 11/17 with, um, some additional information there. So I'll enter that request for the minutes to be amended with those corrections.
Osmiss, I'll second that.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to file the finance committee minutes. Questions? Mr. Mayor?
Again, um, I need to express my concern, my grave concern about the lease. And I really think that we need to direct our legal staff to start looking into this. Um, I served along with three other council members when the lease was prepared. And I recall clearly conversations about services and how they would not be affected. I also made a commitment to the nurses, uh, that if there were, uh, things that would cause them to lose their positions or changes that way, that I would bring that forward. And I, as well have spoke with the city attorney in regards to this. Um, I, I firmly believe that, um, because of the phone calls that I have received about this, that there's a lot of concern within our community. I know at finance committee meeting, uh, it was stated something similar to, well, it was in the minutes. Um, we used to hear that six and seven and eight years ago. Um, and that was one of the reasons I ran for mayor, is to have things more transparent and out in the open. And so, um, I'm very concerned about this. Um, I will share with the council now that I had requested that CARES Health come and speak with us and give us an update. And I received an email from Mr. Schramm saying that he would not do that and that, um, he, the lease only required them to come once a year. And, uh, that email would be available, uh, either through the city attorney or myself. Um, and I'm very concerned about, uh, what's happening there, uh, simply because of the conversations that are happening within our community, the phone calls I'm receiving. And I really think we need to seriously look at having our legal staff look into the legalities on what they're doing. Um, I have brought this to the city administrator two weeks ago today, um, the concern, and, uh, received the same email the rest of you received of legal on Friday. And so I know that our staff is working on this, but as the mayor, I'm very concerned, uh, about this. I'm very concerned for our nurses. I'm very concerned for the residents of the dialysis center and the services that they'll be receiving. Uh, and, uh, as the mayor, uh, and that is what I'm speaking of, is as the mayor, I'm concerned about this and I think it needs to be looked into. Now, if this meeting is not the meeting to make the motion to have our city attorney look into this, I'm more than happy to wait for that. But I don't want to wait a whole lot longer, uh, and allow this, um, ship to go unchecked. So those are my concerns as the mayor for the city of Wilmer.
All right. Councilmember Nelson?
Um, I do see that, um, Mr. Scott, uh, wants to speak also, but, um, as a liaison to the hospital, um, that it was in the minutes that they were looking at that. I reached out to Mr. Grammets the next day and shared with him that I had concerns because of the conversations that went on during the lease regarding the dialysis. And what I remember is that we were very careful in the language in the lease about lines of service being maintained. Not necessarily how they were maintained, but the lines of service being maintained. I did reach out to Mr. Grammets. Mr. Schramm reached out to Mr. Grammets. There has been conversations going on. I think that there, that we need to have an open dialogue, but I also think that we need to respect the lease that is in place and that, um, we need to clarify as council members what that lease is, because I do believe they are meeting the terms of the lease. And I think that we need to be careful with what we're hearing on the street. The same person who called me while we were in the lease negotiations was the person who called me now concerned about dialysis and is concerned about their job. I understand that. But I do believe we need to be careful with our position here also and, um, with that. And I look forward to hearing the response, um, from Mr. Scott. And I do know that Mr. Grammets and Mr. Schramm had have conversations. I do know that Mr. Schramm has had a conversation with you, mayor. And so I would like this to be open because, um, um, he, he shared with me that you were on conversations together. So I'll leave it as that. You can, with whatever, um, with that. But I did request the meeting multiple times because this is what I was concerned about, that we would have information being shared before we know what the facts are. And that's my request is to get to the facts and for us to respect the relationship we have with the lease.
City Attorney Scott, did you have anything you wanted to make a comment on?
Uh, just briefly, I do want the council to know that I have been asked by, uh, both, uh, Mayor Calvin and, uh, City Administrator Grammets to look at the lease and advise, um, how it applies to what we understand, uh, is at least being considered right now regarding the dialysis center. And that will be forthcoming. Um, we've started looking at it and preparing an analysis. We'll have that. I will hope, uh, to City Administrator Grammets to share with you this week.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Matt, roll call to file the minutes?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmiss?
Aye.
Plaman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. That passes. Um, item number 11, consideration of a committee appointment to the Joint Law Enforcement Committee. That'd be Administrator Grammets.
Mayor and city council members, uh, I, I want to report that probably for the last 14 to 20 years, the law enforcement center fourteen to twenty years, the law enforcement center operation between the city and the county has gone along so smoothly that it is likely that the committee has never met. I know for the last fourteen years it has never met and things have gone along very well. Uh, but what has happened recently is that the debt for the law enforcement center has been paid off and that then triggers a section in the current agreement that talks about, you know, reapportionment of cost of operations. Uh, that's your custodial, that's your, you know, garbage pickup, that's all the things that happen, your utilities, uh, and things of that nature. So, uh, in light that there is a document that talks about having three members from the county and three members from the city be on that, uh, oversight committee, uh, I had a discussion with the county administrator and we decided to, uh, bring be, uh, before both bodies, the selection process or who wants to, uh, attend that meeting. And then after that, uh, meeting is held, the new lease, uh, dollar numbers will be then brought back for both entities to sign off on. And I would anticipate this would be like an, uh, an annual meeting. Uh, in all likelihood, it'd probably be in the, you know, September, uh, month and that, uh, then the numbers can be included into each of our budgets so that we know what's, what's happening in the following year. Uh, there are some bigger projects coming up as we're all aware of. Uh, the flat roofs found in Minnesota have an expected life of twenty months and, uh, twenty years and six, six months. Uh, the building is twenty years old and, uh, so there, the, the county is looking at replacements, so that's another big ticket item that's coming down the road. And that's inevitable, it's going to happen, whether we own the building or the county own the building, it's going to have to be, uh, be taken care of. So with that in mind, what I'm proposing is that, um, the police chief and the city administrator and one member, uh, selected by the, uh, amongst the, the city council elected officials be, uh, appointed to that oversight committee. Uh, and, uh, then we will schedule a meeting, uh, coming up here very shortly to deal with the twenty, twenty-one, uh, approved budget numbers. I, I will note for the record, we already have the numbers, we've included the numbers within our budget, uh, because there's really like no, no way out of it kind of a thing. But I think the process is on paper and we should probably follow the process because that was agreed to twenty years ago. So that's what we're gonna, that's what I'm proposing, that we continue on with this, uh, this, uh, committee to review, uh, I would say annually. Uh, so, uh, the rest is up, uh, to you.
So you think it'll be annually? Does the county believe that it would be too, or?
I didn't hear it.
You said annually, you'll, they'll meet annually?
Correct, correct.
You think the county will want to do that?
I, I would think so because the building is twenty years older. It's going to need things and, and they'll, they'll continue to pop up. Uh, this is no different than, than another law enforcement, uh, center that I, I worked with, with the county and the city. And, uh, we met annually, like in September, reviewed the, the operations, we approved it, took it both our bodies and, and it worked fine. Uh, it's great, you know, if, if you, if you don't want to meet, you don't have to meet, you know, but at least the system is in place to meet if you want to.
Because we had a system in place, the school district, the city of Wilmer and the county were supposed to meet like once a year.
Yeah.
And that doesn't happen very often anymore.
Well, it happens, uh, two to three times a year and just, it's pretty loose. It's, it's not real defined.
But then there's no money involved there.
Right.
Yeah.
This should be a defined meet in September, go over the, go over the next year's budget and then put before both the county and, and the city, uh, finance people.
Yep, all right. So how would the council like to proceed? Julie?
Are, are you looking for volunteers? I would love to volunteer for that committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint council member Osmus along with the chief of police and the administrator to the joint city-county administrative space committee.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, council member Osmus. Any questions? Julie, do you think you know the building good enough?
I, I do.
All right. Um, council member Nelson?
My only request is that she go there as a council member and not as a police officer, um, to put on her council member hat and remember that, so.
Any other questions? We have a motion to approve, uh, council member Osmus. We have roll call?
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Do I vote? Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That carries, congratulations. Uh, next item, consideration of distribution of, uh, Caris Act fund balance of the Administrator Grammets?
Mr. Mayor and city council members, at the finance meeting, there was a, um, request, uh, by, uh, Aaron Bachman of the EDC to see if the city was, uh, able to provide any additional funds for the, uh, business and nonprofit, uh, grant program that, uh, the EDC was running on behalf of the city and the county. Uh, currently, the, the funds have, uh, been expended. I believe the, the county is going to be, uh, being asked to consider, uh, a few extra dollars also. The recommendation was that if the city could provide ninety thousand dollars, that would be great. And, uh, I've had the finance department go through our current expenditures, our anticipated expenditures, uh, through the fifteenth. And, uh, I, I believe we feel comfortable that the, uh, amount that we would provide to the EDC to continue the grant, uh, program on behalf of the city of Wilmer and, uh, Candio High County, uh, that we could, uh, provide them a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That still leaves the city with approximately fifty-five thousand dollars should something come up between now and the fifteenth, understanding that on the fifteenth, uh, all monies from the city would have to be expended. Any leftover funds would then be provided to the county irregardless of any other needs we might have. That's just the rules of, of the program. So, uh, November fifteenth, any leftover monies are sent to, to Candio High County, so they will get it anyway. Uh, but before that happens, I think we've got, uh, the next, you know, two weeks approximately that, uh, you know, uh, the EDC could utilize these funds and to the benefit of, of the local, uh, uh, Wilmer and Candio High County businesses that have not yet accessed these funds. So that would be my, uh, staff recommendation is to, uh, allow a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to be, uh, given to the EDC out of the Caris funds. Again, recognizing that we've retained some money just in case, uh, there are other things that we need to expend money on. In addition to, uh, in the next two weeks, we could have, you know, a few more employees come down with COVID-19 and, and that, uh, that was the money that was kind of funding their, uh, that the emergency paid sick leave process. So, uh, with that in mind, uh, that is the staff recommendation. And I do apologize, we had this prepared, I guess, looking at the next finance meeting, but, uh, given the timing, it just didn't work out. I apologize for that. There's, uh, you know, uh, probably should have jumped on this earlier, uh, but, uh, we, we, we could put it on tonight, so that's why it's here instead of going to finance first.
All right. So you, you want this to go to the EDC, not the county?
Well, yeah, we're, we're providing it to the EDC, just like the county is providing them the funds to the EDC. It's actually what the county EDC, so.
Joint.
Yeah, yeah.
But the hundred and eighty thousand going to the EDC?
Yep, uh, just like the original, uh, million dollars that we provided, going to the same location for the same purpose. It's just that now we don't see a need for that money at the city level, so we can provide it now to that program.
All right.
I'll move to approve the staff's recommendation.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the EDC from the city of Wilmer and its reallocation of the Caris funds. Right? Okay, questions? Audrey?
Yeah, um, I do have a concern about the amount and whether we have done our due diligence as far as needs for technology, copy machines, air circulation, those types of things that city, um, that would enhance because this doesn't seem to be ending soon. And my question, I can support this, but my question is if they, um, if they don't use it all, can they let us know so that we have the opportunity to spend it before it would go back to the county?
Mr. Grammets, do you know that question?
Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, two weeks is going to go by so fast. Number two, any of those big ticket items like air handling units and filters and all that, we actually have to write the check by November fifteenth. Uh, the only way you do not get to write the check or don't have to write the check is if there was a supply glitch due to COVID, that would be like so many people ordering masks that the manufacturer can't keep up. Well, you know, we literally couldn't bring in, you know, somebody in to look at our system and have it installed and write the check in two weeks on some of these big ticket items. So that's why we're, you know, we're saying release the money, we, we just cannot do it. Uh, there's some little things like, uh, we talked about, uh, there's a program called, uh, uh, See, Click, Fix, you know, uh, where a citizen can, instead of coming into city hall and say, hey, there's a pothole on First Street, they can just see it, it's software, they take a picture of it, the GPS gets sent to the city, it gets processed through the system. You know, we're only talking about five thousand dollars and again, to implement that before November fifteenth is, it's, you know, it's just not going to happen. Uh, so we've taken those things into account and just said, what can we do, what can't we do? And, you know, if we were talking about See, Click, Fix incorporating that in, we still have fifty-five thousand dollars that we're retaining. So we can probably do some smaller things between now and November fifteenth, but the big ticket items just weren't going to happen.
All right, thank you. Sean?
I think the money's appropriate to be putting towards these, um, assistance to, to small businesses. So I think it's great and, and doubling the amount they're asking for, I think is appropriate. With that extra money, and I think it's also good to have that in case we do have employees that have COVID within the next couple of weeks. But can some of those dollars be used to support, for instance, how we're doing these hybrid meetings? Can we use that for IT equipment like cameras and those types of things? Um, because I'd like to see some of that going towards some of the stuff that we didn't, this wasn't how we wanted to run these things, but it's where we're at. Can you buy those types of equipment for support last minute if we need to do that?
Mr. Mayor and city council members, the answer to that is yes. We've, we are, um, in the order and delivery stream of, like in the community center of upgrading most everything there, um, so that we can have meetings there to the extent like we do at the fire station where it's all connected. Uh, yeah, we've been, we've been updating the IT stuff as we have been going and, and, uh, we've, there's only so much you can do i- i- in order to, to, to meet the needs, you know, because it, it really, really has to deal with the COVID. And with COVID, it's the meeting and the public meetings and, and how do you handle all that and still operate? So that's what we're kind of, uh, gauging it on, but we've, we've done most everything. Now, what we haven't done is, you know, like here at, at the, at the Health and Human Services, because that's the county. I mean, it'd be great if we had maybe, uh, a little bit narrower, uh, camera, uh, for the, for, you know, for the city council here, but that's a, that's a county decision at this point in time, it's not necessarily ours. So our, our properties have been handled, uh, appropriately at this point in time to the amount of, um, IT technology to meet our needs.
All right, any other questions? Roll call then?
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, council member announcements. Councilmember Maskey?
I would just say, uh, tomorrow is, uh, election day, so please get out to vote if you have not already done so.
Kathy?
Thank you. I'd, uh, like to invite people to participate and celebrate the light setup. They're starting Friday night at two o'clock and going till five o'clock. I guess it's Friday afternoon, not Friday night. And then again on Saturday, starting at nine o'clock in the morning and going until five. And, uh, Sunday again, so if you're interested, please go to their website, celebrate thelight.net and sign up on, uh, signup genius, I think is the tool that they're using. If you, uh, find yourself having some time and wanting to get outside in a space and place that's COVID-friendly or safe or as safe as it can be, it's a great opportunity for you and your family. And, uh, they have, what, eight hundred thousand lights that need to be put up in a very short period of time, so please show up and help out. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki?
They took what I was going to say, but I also want to remind everybody, I think the weather's going to be really nice this weekend too, so get outside and put up some light.
All right, thank you. I'm going to look on the screen here. Councilmember Plowman?
Uh, no, nothing tonight, no, thank you.
Nothing, okay. Councilmember Osmus?
I'm, nothing for me, thank you.
All right, council member Nelson?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to comment that I participated in the Healthy Together Wilmer celebration. And for those of you, I know there were several of us that were on that, um, that event. And if you haven't, I would encourage you to take, to check it out, take the time to look at it. It was amazing to see what's gone on in our community. And I think it speaks to, um, communication and, and things that we need to continue working on. And so it was great and I want to say a special thank you to Blue Cross Blue Shield for their investment in Wilmer and to encourage council members to, um, to view that if you can. And it's, it's available out there, so it was great and I know it made, um, statewide news, et cetera, and, um, it was, uh, emotional and fun to have participated in and a thank you to everyone, um, who did.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alvarado?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, pro temp. Um, I agree with, uh, council member, uh, Maskey and, uh, to remember the vote, I would ask people to stay calm and carry on, um, as we, uh, go through the counting and, and, uh, tabulation, um, we will get through this. Um, be aware of, uh, there's a nice public service, uh, announcement by Dr., uh, Smith, the co-administrator for, uh, Caris, talking about, uh, wearing masks, social distancing and washing hands. Um, we have a case in my neighborhood, uh, so, um, it's, uh, it's getting close. It's no longer something that you hear about in New York City, um, it's here, uh, so you have to start, uh, um, being aware. November eleventh is, uh, Veterans Day and, uh, we, and I know we've got a number of vets, uh, in this room. Um, so, um, thank you for your service and thank you to all the veterans and, and current active military personnel for your service. Um, it's, uh, not missed and it's greatly appreciated. And, um, thank you, uh, that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Kelvin?
Thank you, I just have a couple of comments to make and I want to echo what council member Alvarado just stated. Um, I did have a meeting with, uh, Caris Health and Dave Baker and Andrew Lang last Friday and we talked about the COVID issues, what we talked about and the messaging and, uh, our county at that time was the hotspot in Minnesota. Uh, we had about a nineteen point six percent conversion rate on testing. And so that means approximately one of every five people being tested is coming back as positive. And so that means approximately one of every five people being tested is coming back as positive. And so uh it's important to wear your mask, stay home if you're sick, wash your hands and social distance. Uh, we are looking at trying to develop some new uh wording or phrasing so we can get that information out, but as councilmembers, I would encourage you uh to encourage people to uh the following things that have already been said. We need to continue doing that. We need to up the game. And so just want to thank you for that. Also, I just want to also give a shout out to Blue Cross Blue Shield. I've received phone calls from all over the country this weekend, um, starting yesterday. And I think I had three or four calls today. I think I had two calls yesterday. Um, we're getting a lot of attention over the Blue Cross Blue Shield and people want to know what we did, how we did it, and then what we're going to do to sustain it. So again, Blue Cross Blue Shield invested a lot of money. I think it was about 2.3, 2.4 million dollars uh that they invested in our community along with their ancillary services. So that was a very good project, as councilmember Nelson uh has stated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Julie, did you have something else you wanted to say?
I was just going to add on to what councilmember Nelson was saying that um it there was an article in the Minneapolis Tribune Sunday paper about the the project in Wilmer. I think that probably was part of why we're getting uh getting so much um mileage and notoriety for it.
All right, thank you. Uh, announcements of committee meetings. Public Works, Andrew?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Public Works will be meeting this week. The agenda is posted uh Wednesday, November 4th, 5:00 PM. Uh, the invite should already be in your inbox. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. Finance is scheduled to meet this Thursday at 5:00 PM. It is a finance committee meeting, full council meeting. Um, we were are working to be able to do it um in person at the community center, but in light of where we're at with numbers, we will be reaching out to make sure, see who wants to attend in person. Um, since there is a lot of setup with that, I just want to make sure that we will utilize it that way or if we need to wait on that and meet virtually, that's fine too. Um, so watch for a a request with how you want to meet. So, but Thursday, 5:00 PM.
All right, thank you. There will be no community development meeting on Monday. And Labor?
Uh, Labor will meet next on November 23rd at 6:15. I'll repeat that at our next meeting as well. Um, obviously, we're in the throes of negotiation and that has taken a monopoly of our HR director's time. That is obviously the reason for the next uh item on our agenda this evening. So the next meeting for Labor again will be November 23rd at 6:15.
All right, thank you. So now we have to go into closed session?
Uh, I guess I have the script for that if you'd like me to do that.
Go ahead.
Uh, the next agenda item is labor negotiation strategy under Minnesota statutes, section 13D point 03 subdivision 1, clause B. A motion of the meeting may be closed pursuant to such statute upon a duly approved motion of the city council. I will now entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting.
Second, we have a motion and a second to close this. Roll call?
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't get the who made the motion. Maskey, okay. Um, councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Maskey?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right, the time is now 8:35. The city council will now go into closed session in the Health and Human Resources uh conference room uh as well as online. Uh, those of you online, you received an email at 4:13 this afternoon from HR Director Beckman with directions to go to the go-to meeting proportion of the meeting. Um, we will begin that closed session in five minutes, so we give people a chance to take a quick break. Only-
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Only the city council authorized, city council representatives may be in attendance at any portion of a closed session. We are now going into closed session.